Acting City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, May 24th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. I have one announcement. Memorial Day ceremonies will be held at Veterans Memorial Plaza at Fountain Square in downtown Evanston on Monday, May 31st. The assembly will take place at 10:00 a.m. and the ceremony will begin at 10:30 a.m. In keeping with the time honored traditions of past ceremonies, there will be non-denominational reflections, singing, and remarks by elected officials and the leaders of local veterans groups such as Evanston American Legion Post 42, Tech Sergeant William B. Snell, VFW Post 7186, and Vietnam North Suburban Chapter. The Northwestern University NROTC Color Guard and Rifle Team will participate. There are no proclamations. City Manager, do you have public announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. We have several this evening. First, recognition from the Illinois Parks and Recreation Association, Paul DiAgostino, our forestry superintendent, is here with that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman, City Council. The Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department nominated Evanston residents Pamela and James Ellis for a Community Service Award through the Illinois Park District or Illinois Park and Recreation Association and the Illinois Association of Park Districts. The nomination was approved and we invited the recipients to tonight's meeting to receive their award and to be publicly thanked and recognized. They're in the audience, I'll have some to stand in a minute. The plaque of recognition reads as follows, "In recognition and appreciation of outstanding contributions and unselfish devotion for the advancement of parks, recreation, and leisure in the community and the state of Illinois." I'd like to share with you why the Ellis' were nominated for this award. Pamela and James Ellis offered to donate almost $45,000 to the city of Evanston for the renovation of the Jens Jensen-designed Grotto adjacent to the Evanston Art Center, which is within the Lighthouse Landing Park. The Grotto was part of the original landscape design completed by renowned landscape architect Jens Jensen in the late 1800s. For several years, the Grotto did not retain water during the summer months, and many attempts were made to locate the exact cause of the leak, but we were never successful in doing so. The Ellis' worked with Klaus Brothers Incorporated, who performed the work. This is a firm with excellent experience in fountain renovations, including the total renovation of the Lily Pond adjacent to Lincoln Park Zoo. The Ellis' covered all costs related to this work. The renovation was completed last year and everyone is extremely pleased with the outcome. The project was officially handed off to the city last year and our staff will be maintaining the Grotto from now on. We're pleased to be able to formally thank the Ellis' for their vision and commitment to making Evanston a better place to live, play, and enjoy. I would like to invite our elected officials to visit the Grotto and view this lovely spot for yourselves, and I'd like to present this plaque to Pamela and James Ellis.
I would just like to thank the council and the city for this very nice award. We're so proud of the city and what they're trying to do to make the town more beautiful in every way they can, and I hope that the other citizens of Evanston will look around and find a project that they would like to invest themselves in and make our city more beautiful. Thank you very much. Before I go, I want to hand off some information about the Lighthouse Landing Park, and I'd like to have the council take it home. It's a thinner book than you had earlier today to read, and it's a good, it's a really good read, and I hope everybody takes it home and reads it. It's all about the Lighthouse Landing Park, which is a beautiful, wild park that kids love to run around in and have a wonderful time in. It's located at the corner of Central Street and Sheridan Road, where the Lighthouse is. And Jens Jensen, of course, was the world-renowned landscape architect who designed the, all the grounds around the Clark House, which is now the Art Center. And we're trying very hard to restore that garden to its original beauty. And, so I'll pass this along if you could pass it down, and I think the mayor has one already because she sat on the Lighthouse Landing Board for many years.
The mayor has three that you have relentlessly passed out.
I keep passing them out.
And I would like to take this opportunity to say that one of the things you should receive this award for is attending innumerable Lighthouse Landing meetings, and Pam, if you want to get anything done in this town, call Pam Ellis. That's my advice. Jane Grover would like to say a few words.
Thank you.
I want to thank both, both of you for not only your significant contribution to the restoration of the Jens Jensen Grotto at Lighthouse Landing, but for all of your contributions to the Lighthouse Landing over the years as members of the Lighthouse Landing Committee, and for your continuing presence there for maintaining and restoring the beauty of the gardens at Lighthouse Landing. It's really a wonderful, restorative, curative place in Evanston. I hope you'll all find your way there, and thank you for inspiring, I hope, many Evanston residents to make similar contributions toward the beautification of our parks. So, thank you again, Pam and Jim, for all that you've done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we have presentations from the Evanston Preservation Commission for the Preservation and Design Awards. Lehman Walker, our Director of Community and Economic Development, will walk us through that, and Mayor Tisdale will make the presentations.
Good evening. My name is Lehman Walker, Director of Community and Economic Development. On behalf of the Evanston Preservation Commission, I want to thank the mayor and members of City Council for giving us this time to present the 2010 Evanston Preservation and Design Awards. This year's jurors were Jack Weiss of Jack Weiss &amp; Associates Design and also President of Design Evanston, Leonard Karoski of Gush Partners Architects, and Amy Reisborough, Associate Member of the Preservation Commission. We thank them for volunteering their time to this year's awards program. We've prepared a short presentation to recognize this year's award recipients. I will first announce the property address and the description of the work, and then I will call the owners, architect, and finally the contractor. As you hear the names, please come forward to receive from Mayor Tisdale your award. First award is for 1419 Judson, which is a sensitive addition alteration. This is a one-story family room addition, including deck and two-story tower element, which have been added to the rear of this house. Aluminum siding and storm windows were removed to allow for a painted wood exterior. Asphalt roofing was removed and replaced with cedar shingles. The comments of the jury were that it was a thoughtful addition with exquisite detail and craftsmanship. So, accepting on behalf of the owners, architect, and contractor is Ms. Mary Bruglieri. If you'll come forward, please. This is a rehabilitation and restoration. Located in the Lakeshore Historic District, this large single-family home had been deemed uninhabitable at purchase in 1998. And in fact, I'm advised it was the neighborhood haunted house. The property underwent a complete restoration, from the replacement of the sewage lines to restoration of original door hardware. The work discreetly incorporates modern amenities while retaining all period features. All work was done to the Secretary of the Interior's Guidelines for Historic Properties. The jury's comments were a subtle and impeccable restoration of a stately landmark. The owner and contractor is Ms. Janet Cole. If you'll come forward. The third award goes to 1024 Judson, which is an addition alteration. The program for this project was to adopt the existing garage and unfinished attic into a functioning garage with separate side entry and a guest suite above. Design includes well-scaled landscaping space in the backyard with a path and a masonry site wall which visually link the main and coach houses. The jury comment was that it is a seamless merging of the old and new with lovely attention to detail. The owners are Mark Owleen and Sarah Harding, the architect Tom Bassett-Dilly, and contractor Sturm Builders. If you'll come forward, please. This is the commission's highest accolade, reserved only for projects of exceptional note. This year, the jury decided that this award should be given to these projects because they felt it would contribute significantly to the quality of the public realm and to the identity of the surrounding area. The first one is 1801 Wesley Avenue, and this is appropriate new construction. It's construction of a new single-family home on a vacant corner lot in the Ridge Historic District. The jury comments were that this is a striking contemporary design, sensitive to its context in form, scale, and massing, with a particularly successful interface between public and private realms. This project illustrates that good contemporary design could sit comfortably in a historic district. The owners are Richard and Elaine Hubecker, the architect Paul Adrain, and Rock and Wall Construction, the contractor. Would you please come forward? The final award in this category is for 1600 Church Street Mason Park for the addition alteration. This project comprised the development of a master plan for all of Mason Park. Designed with input from the community, the result is a structured series of recreational spaces of different types and a fieldhouse, which is now the focal point of the park. The jury comments were that this project has a terrific breakdown of scale and a wonderful variety of spaces to suit a range of differing needs. It is a wonderful example of successful placemaking. The award in this category goes to the City of Evanston Parks and Recreation and Community Service Department, represented by Stephanie Levine, Elliot Dudnick &amp; Associates, the architect, and J.P. Bruno Corporation, the contractor. Would you please come forward? I'd like to thank again the mayor and city council for their time and attention, and additionally, I would like to thank all of those who participated in the Preservation Commission's Design and Preservation Award programs for their efforts in making Evanston a more interesting and beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, moving on, and Mr. Gaynor, our light switch seems to not be working, so if you could turn the lights back on. A few additional presentations, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Next is Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works, to talk briefly about the Memorial Day trash removal announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, Bob Kowitz. I just wanted to make an announcement with regards to the Refuge Recycling and Yard Waste Collection. For Memorial Day, everything will slide back one day, so Monday will be collected on Tuesday and so forth, all the way through Friday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another activity that is occurring this weekend is something known as Dillow Day. Northwestern University students celebrating the end of the spring quarter certainly has also caused for concern among many of our residents. I've asked Chief Eddington, who's been working very closely with the Northwestern University Police and other representatives from the university, to kind of talk a little bit about our preparations this year in order to make sure that the students have fun, but our residents also are respected through the process. Chief Eddington.
Good evening. Thank you, City Manager, Your Honor, Members of the City Council. The planning for this year's Dillow Day event began shortly after last year's event. There was a concern raised by residents in the neighborhood about unruly behavior and overinviting by some of the off-campus, in some of the off-campus housing areas. Consequently, we've worked very closely with Chief Lewis, the Fireman's Park neighbors, other representatives of the neighborhood, and have put together a comprehensive plan to address the issues that we anticipate coming up on Dillow Day. Much of this preparation was preemptive in nature. It included participations in the Dillow Day Task Force meeting, door-to-door talks with off-campus NU students about Dillow Day conduct, distribution of flyers to the neighbors that had scheduled Dillow Day activities, and contact with area hospitals for possible EMS runs on Dillow Day. Additionally, we've worked very hard with other city departments to scrutinize block party permits for that weekend that may have in the past contributed to some nuisance issues in the area. On the date of, on Saturday, Dillow Day, the Evanston Police and NU Police will patrol the area both on and off campus. In cooperation, our mutual aid agreements between the agencies, in this manner, we have the ability to apply both campus and off-campus sanctions to any inappropriate conduct. Additionally, the command van will be deployed and staffed with cert volunteers. The location of the command van will be Mayfield and Gaff, I'm sorry, Maple and Gaffield. This was chosen as a deployment location due to the number of calls for service in this area last year. An additional piece of information that came to my attention during community meetings not directly related to Dillow Day is I ran across several ETS parents who called my attention that perhaps ETS was overly represented in this event. Consequently, we've reached out to our partners at ETS Security and the Dean's Office to have a presence in the area during the off-campus festivities to help us identify students that they would be familiar with. I think this combination of planning will bring a more orderly Dillow Day to the neighborhood, and we want to again be responsive to the concerns expressed to us by the residents in the area. If there's any questions, I'd be able, I'd be happy to answer them, City Manager.
Seeing no lights, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And Madam Mayor, one additional presentation. If I could ask our Fire Chief, Alan Berkowski, to step forward. As I know all of you are aware, Chief Berkowski is retiring from his service as a Fire Chief of the City of Evanston on Friday of this week, and I just wanted to take the opportunity on behalf of the staff to thank Chief Berkowski for his outstanding service to the City of Evanston, and I would imagine there are other members of the council would also like to recognize.
Mayor Alderman, City Manager, it's really been an honor and a privilege to serve you and the citizens for almost 29 years. It's really been an exciting career, and I'm really proud of the accomplishments of the men and the women of the Evanston Fire Department, and all I can say is thank you.
You kept us all safe, so thank you very much. Next, are you?
And that concludes the presentation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there any communications, Acting City Clerk?
No, nothing's there.
All right. Next is a special order of business, Health Department work plan.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, two items this evening. The first, I've asked Evanda Thomas, our Director of the Evanston Health Department, to make a presentation this evening regarding her work plan for the remainder of 2010 and going into 2011. As the council is aware, there were many changes in the Health Department with the budget that was adopted, and I think most of those changes were made with one thing in mind, and that is really to focus the efforts of our Health Department in making Evanston a healthier place. And the work plan that Ms. Thomas and her colleagues have put together, I think, does that. So, Ms. Thomas, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, City Manager. I'd like to introduce myself again, Evanda Thomas, Evanston's Health Department Director. I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce our medical director, who serves as our consultant for our local certified health department. Dr. Bruce Dublin is here with me tonight. Would you please stand? Thank you. We all know we're going through tough times in the city, and it's easy to get pessimistic and narrow our vision and continue to cut services, but let's really think about what makes Evanston great. What makes a city that we all care about great, and how we can work together and assure that it happens? Today, or tonight, I'm sorry, you will hear a vision of a vibrant, healthy city, and the ultimate goal of the Health Department is to make that commitment of working towards creating a healthy Evanston. So, tonight, I'm requesting that the City Council support a new vision and expanded focus for the Health Department, and I'm also requesting an endorsement of the City Department of Health to establish its first federally qualified health center located in Evanston's borders. So, in creating this healthy city, you might ask yourself, well, what is a healthy city? Well, it's one where all are pulling in the same direction. The all encompasses the city, the business community, the educational systems, the residents, and all who use and benefit our services are a part of its creation. Again, tonight, I will talk about that healthy, dynamic city and how we'll work to make it a reality. So, first of all, our mission for public health is to protect, serve, and promote wellness for people who live, work, and play in Evanston through our creative partnerships, creative and sustainable partnerships. So, what is public health? Public health serves in three major capacities. Assessment, which is identifying the health risk for the entire community, assuring access for individuals with limited access to care from our private sector, and informing the public on health issues by way of an annual report that I will report to the City Council that helps develop and guide health policy for Evanston. And so, if you take a look at our local public health system, it encompasses police and EMS and community centers, but if you notice, right in the center is the Health Department. And so, our expanded mission that I want to introduce tonight, and this is a visual picture of our new role as the convener of all of the local public health systems, providing that leadership that protects and promotes the wellness of people who live, play, and work in Evanston. So, first of all, let's look at our historical overview. We've been a leader of healthcare in the North Shore for over a century. As you can see, the Health Department was organized in 1874, and we're actually older than Evanston Hospital and St. Francis Hospital. In the 1950s, a suburban Cook County tuberculosis sanitarium and Evanston Health Department took over TB programming. In the 60s, we had vision and hearing and screening programs started. Also, in 1960s, our dental clinic was open for our medically underserved indigenous population of children, and in 1960, also, our family planning program was established. In the 70s, our sexually transmitted disease services were established. But due to financial pressures in 2007, the medical arm or medical component of our services ended. And so, what happened to our community since our services ended for medical services in 2007? We saw a significant increase in sexually transmitted diseases for Evanston, and I will share with you what the statistics look like. They're quite remarkable. Limited access for specialty care services and limited access for women's contraceptive health or family planning. So, when we look at what our statistics look like for Evanston, we already understand that adolescent girls and young women appear to be at greatest risk for contracting gonorrhea and chlamydia, according to the Centers for Disease Control. But for Evanston, 73% of all reported sexually transmitted diseases are in the age group between 14 and 24. What that means is since the closure of clinical services in the Health Department, there's been a 25% increase of chlamydia and gonorrhea for this age group since 2007.
Evanda, I have one question. The school-based health center is still open for the 14 to 18-year-old group.
That is correct. And the school-based health center, well, you, we are a partner with the school-based health center, but you have to be consented for treatment. And so, we know that about 60% of the population is consented, but about 45% of the students actually utilize the services, so there is still a gap in health disparity as it relates to age and wrapping around this epidemic for STDs. Thank you for bringing that up. Also, unfortunately, I have to report that for the first six months of 2010, the numbers for sexually transmitted diseases in this particular age group is significantly higher than all the overall numbers for 2008 and 2009. And I just want to point you to this area. These are the numbers that I'm addressing between the age group of 14 and 24. But again, this is the only one example of a health indicator. I'm concerned that there are others. So, the Health Department leads the community through this process that creates the E-Plan. The E-Plan is the Evanston Project for Local Assessment of Need. Basically, it's the priorities that the Health Department utilizes as a tool or guide or blueprint that helps drive the initiatives and interventions targeted for our community. And as you can see, these are the six priorities for 2006 through 2011, and I will go on just and give you some examples of some of the programs that are birthed out of the E-Plan Assessment of Need. Physical activity, some of you are very familiar with the Women Out Walking Program. It's a classic example of how the Health Department wraps its arm around addressing obesity for Evanston. So, the health indicator and goal is increasing physical activity, which meets the Healthy People 2010 goal. The initiative is a walking program, and the outcomes are measurable and lead to the ultimate report card of how we as a community are addressing obesity in Evanston. What I will note is that this is a two-year program, a program that's, it's in the second year, and we've doubled our number of participants. Last year, we had about 500 women, and this year, we've got 1,100 women that are active and participants. We also want to pilot this program in the youth population and create a youth-in-motion program targeting 500 children and collaborate with farmers' market to increase access to healthy foods. Of course, this list is not extent of all of the programs, but these are just some of the highlights. For access to care, we serve as a referral system. We also provide pediatric dental care, and we manage the private and public partnerships to create the health center that I'm going to kind of introduce and mention extensively a little bit in the, later in the presentation. For chronic and communicable disease surveillance, there's approximately 78 reportable communicable diseases that are by law required to be reported to the Health Department.
Excuse me, Evanda Alderman-Burris has a question.
It's actually about the physical activity portion. I noticed that you listed the number of people participating, but I'm just wondering what your goal is, what your measurement goal is, what your baseline is. So, we have participant numbers, but is your goal to reduce obesity? So we have participant numbers, but is your goal to reduce obesity as a percentage of whatever in the city, or is your goal participation? I'm just trying to figure out the baseline number on what we're trying to achieve. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you for your question. Our goal really is to create an awareness around whether or not you're participating in any physical activity. The women actually set the goal from three directives that they're given. They want to either improve their sleep, they want to either feel better, or decrease their stress. So those were the goals and parameters that we gave the participants. They self-selected what goal that they wanted to work on, but our goal was to create awareness. And then ultimately, look at the numbers and the impact of this program to see how we can create more programming around addressing obesity for Evanston.
Okay, so it's mostly an education awareness versus really more of a reduction in obesity, per se?
Correct.
Great, that's all I need to know. Thanks, appreciate that.
And then going on, addressing chronic and communicable disease surveillance, again, as Mayor Tisdale mentioned, through our initiative and partnership with North Shore University Health Systems and Evanston Township High School, we are the third arm or partner for the school-based health center in addressing or promoting responsible sexual behavior. So how do we create the healthy Evanston? We will host a health summit. This summit, we plan to take a collaborative consensus-based approach to problem solving that involves a diverse group of citizens from the community, an asset-based approach to problem solving that defines people in relationships by their skills and abilities rather than their needs and deficits, and address our challenges at a systems level in the community rather than doing short-term, low-impact projects. We'll share the outcomes of this health summit and the priorities that are derived out of that health summit, again, through a publication of an annual report of how we're doing as a city. And then again, we serve as the convener for continued community engagement amongst our community partners, such as our business, community residents, educational systems, and our hospitals. Our emergency preparedness initiative consists of our core volunteer groups within the city. Currently, it's the Medical Reserve Corps, our CERTS, and our Citizens Police Academy. We want to tap into these established volunteer corps groups to support any current or established initiatives to address, such as outbreaks and public health emergencies, and these groups were really instrumental in the success of our H1N1 response. Our health protection programs, which most people are familiar with, is our enforcement and monitoring services through inspections of our food establishments, issuance of our permits and licensing, beach water testing, and our integrated pest control management So to go further on the need for partnerships, to establish partnerships, the goal is to expand our medical and dental services in a sustainable and cost-neutral avenue for the city of Evanston. And you say, how will we accomplish that goal? Well, we looked at our current resources, understanding that no one entity can solve the health needs of the entire community, and currently, we are in robust discussions with community partners to establish a health center for Evanston. Our goal is to establish a federally qualified health center, which we're meeting with to join forces to address the health needs of Evanston. And so looking at what our resources look like, in 2006, the Health Department was a staff of 33 full-time employees and 10 part-time employees, and currently, we're 15 full-time employees and four part-time. And so we rely on partnerships with our student interns, boards and commissions, our business community, our school districts, Northwestern, private schools, hospitals, pharmacists, and community partners, because we understand that pooled resources is a win-win opportunity for growth. And so you may ask me, well, why an FQHC, or why a federally qualified health center? What can that offer us? These are the kinds of services, as you can see, that are offered, but also, a federally qualified health center helps leverage different kinds of funding. So the benefits of this kind of private-public partnership that we intend to manage addresses the economic recession necessitates collaboration, and partnerships are just logical. Both health centers and public health departments are expected to serve more individuals in their communities and to play a greater role in public health initiatives. Partnerships are logical because we serve individuals with high rates of chronic disease, the same populations. We serve underinsured, uninsured, poorly insured. The relationships are important to improve quality, efficiency, and effectiveness and accessibility of services. And also, the public and private partnerships allow both entities to contain expenditures through pooled resources and pooled expertise. It creates alternate sources of funding for Evanston that we may have not experienced in the past. There's an opportunity for economic development and growth and employment opportunities. So what are our next steps? We will submit and develop a request for proposal for a health center by fall of 2010. We will explore establishing academic programs, such as residency programs and teaching opportunities in our health center, and we'll also host the health summit, as mentioned, to address the state-of-the-union of health for Evanston. So again, I'm requesting two things tonight of you, City Council. We are proud to be the city's Health Department, and I am excited. I'm excited about our new role, but I have two requests. I'm requesting that the City Council support this new vision and expanded focus for the Health Department, and I'm also requesting an endorsement for a City Department of Health federally qualified health center located in Evanston to open 2011. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'll endorse that. I've wanted it for quite a while. Alderman-Grover?
Thank you, Mayor Tisdale, and thank you, Director Thomas, very much. I find the, we've talked about this before, the statistics that you presented to us about the rates of sexually transmitted infection in Evanston, especially among our younger cohort, especially alarming. And what it suggests to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that our youth is engaging in some very risky behavior, and they are either not seeking or simply not finding a place for services elsewhere outside of Evanston since we've closed our clinical services a few years ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, is that what we, what conclusions we can draw from the numbers of the rates of STIs in Evanston?
Particularly in that health indicator. And because we're only looking at that health indicator tonight, my concern is there are other health indicators that we need to manage and look at as well. But that one resonates significantly because we do partner with our school-based health center, and we're trying to wrap our arms around this epidemic.
And would a, I don't know if there was a slide that I missed, would a federally qualified health center then enable us to open up clinical service for STI treatment for family planning services?
Yes.
And what other kinds of services would a federally qualified health center include?
Preventative services, chronic disease case management, prenatal health, adult services, and this is what federally qualified health centers do every day, and this is what they're very good at doing. And so, yes, our urgent need is family planning and STD services, but also, there's a gap in accessing health services for adult groups, mental health services, and so establishing that federally qualified health center will provide comprehensive care.
I would encourage us all to endorse our pursuit of federally health, federally qualified health center in Evanston.
Thank you.
Alderman-Javertake?
That was very impressive. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Will your strategy for funding also include pursuit of reimbursement for care that's given out?
Yes. Federally qualified, what I did mention, because I, you know, can only mention so much in a period of time, federally qualified health centers, not only do they leverage federal dollars, but they have a higher capacity to get reimbursement dollars that we don't experience independently at this time. So having that partnership allows a greater capacity to capture reimbursement dollars that we can't access as a standalone entity.
Yeah, I would appreciate, you know, some further elaboration of that, what the strategy is, and who, what models you're looking at, who has done that.
Yes. The closest model that has done this expansion is Lake County Health Department, and so I will be happy to share concrete numbers, what that looks like, operating costs, revenue opportunities. I can share more detail to the council, sure.
Because I, you know, I support what you're proposing, and I know that the City Manager wants us to have that kind of role in advocacy and in provision of that kind of service through that kind of center. But I want to make sure that, as we move forward, that that doesn't become a liability on the city.
Correct.
In terms of one of our, you know, cost centers.
Correct. Alderman-Tandem?
Thank you. I wanted to sort of informally second Alderman-Grover's motion to get behind this federally funded health center initiative. I had one particular question. Does that actually solve the problem of consent, which you indicated was a problem, I guess, at the high school level?
Yes. When we served as a family planning agent, the laws of Title X removes any barriers for a woman to access care. So actually, when we operated in that capacity, consent wasn't required. But because you're in an educational institution, consent is required. So the laws and expectations are different depending on how you serve, and so that consent issue would be resolved in this instance. Yes.
Alderman-Raney?
Ivana, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm curious to know more about the financing.
Yes.
And first question is, would there be a means test for people accessing the care at a federally authorized clinic?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear of your question.
Would you have to have a certain income to access care?
A federally qualified health center can function regardless of ability or inability to pay. So there is sliding scale fee.
Oh, okay, that's, that's, and what about insurance? Would you, would a center accept insurance?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman-Homes?
I just want to say thank you, Director Thomas. It is so exciting to know that we may be doing what we should have been doing for some time, so I'm very excited about the prospect of doing this. Thank you.
I would like to let everyone know that this morning at 8 o'clock, when I had a breakfast meeting, Ivana was having a breakfast meeting with Commissioner Suffredin and Karen Shavers, working on getting financing for this health clinic.
That would be true.
Thank you, Ivana.
It's good to be caught in the act. Thank you for your.
Where would it be?
Not sure of location.
Could it be here or no?
We know that it's going to be in Evanston. We're not sure if the best location is the Civic Center, so we're looking at locations in the community, and so, again, assuring that it's in Evanston, in our borders, but not really sold on if it should be here. We think it really should be in the community, accessible to all. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our last presentation on the special order of business, Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager, making his farewell appearance, giving you a budget report. Ms. Daly will be doing that heretofore, but we felt it was important, now that we know how we ended the year, to give you a brief summary in your agenda packet, it's a more detailed summary, but I wanted to have Mr. Lyons to spend a few minutes walking you through how we ended the year and to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Saying it's farewell, that's, that's hard on me. I need, Curtis is gonna bring up the, there we go. I just want to point out that as we start off this presentation, why is it in May? It's in May because, as noted in your packet, we do have to put in several, several payables and also try to get a few late revenues in, so it's through February 28th, but we are still paying February 28th bills all the way through mid-April. So over the next month, you're going to get a first month in 2010, '11, and then a second month, and then a first quarter. So we will catch up very quickly. So the general fund, and we're going to focus mainly on the general fund, it was the situation that was of our gravest concern during the year for '09, '10. We projected to come in at about a $5.1 million variance to the bad. We came in at $5.6 million. One of the things that added to that differential was, we didn't close on the property that, while we didn't close on the property budgeted, we didn't close on any property during the year, and we had a half a million dollar revenue in the budget for '09, '10 for the closing of a property that did subsequently close, so we're in good shape from that perspective. General fund expenditures came in under budget by $2.6 million or 3%, and that also wasn't quite where we wanted to be, and I'll get into that in a second. We're a little bit above that. This means that the unreserved fund balance decreased from $14.3 million to $11.4 million. Our goal was higher than that, it was closer to $12.4, but again, subsequently, we sold the Caravalli property, and that money is, has been deposited. Just one note, all figures are unaudited, but we do have most everything in, payables and receivables, and the annual audit will be available in early August. So what were our differences? Well, property taxes came in at $16.4 million compared to $15.1 million in the budget, and that is something we'll rectify as far as that differential by going to a new budget year where the levy that is levied will be the amount in the coming budget year. We were always off by one year due to our accounting practices on the levy versus what, which budget year it was included in. Real estate transfer taxes came in at $1.6 million. We estimated they'd come in at $1.5, and that was well under budget. There also, that was also approximately where we budgeted for the coming year. Income taxes came in at $5.9 million or $1.1 million, and we thought we might be as far as $1.3 million off. Building permits came in at $1.5 million or $1 million under budget. Utility taxes were probably the big surprise in where we lost revenues, and a lot of that had to do with the fluctuations in the natural gas market. So we had a tremendous drop in the natural gas price per unit, and that affected that portion of the natural gas. We also had a decrease in telecommunications due to the downturn in the economy, which made up a little less than a third of that being under budget.
Alderman-Raney, do you have a question?
I do, I do. I'm looking at the spreadsheet that you gave us in our packet.
Certainly, I'd be happy to.
Under natural gas tax distribution, we projected revenues of $1,845,000, and we were short in actual revenues of $764,000, okay? But, but, in natural gas use tax, we were almost on target. How, in our projection, how does that happen? How can we be so far off in one projection, having to do with that gas, and so close in the other? I mean...
A very good question. The difference is, is there are two types of taxes. One is based on the dollars, the other is based on the cubic centimeters used of gas. So our projection for the one that we were right on target was, we had a normal winter, we used the exact amount of gas projected, and so our fee for that, based on the volume used, not based on the price per therm, came in right where we expected. The price per therm plummeted during the year, and so that tax, which was based on the price per therm, went down, and we also benefited from that on our own side of heating our own facilities, but that's the difference. One is a volume fee, and the other is a unit or a price fee.
So we didn't have a fixed contract on natural gas, fixed price per therm?
For our own? No, I do not believe so. I'll bring that report back, because we did just bring that to the council recently. We talked about both electric and natural gas. So I don't want to guess the wrong direction there. We've always tried to have fixed fees for both electric and gas to stabilize our costs. Investment income, we are still below a percent, and it's gonna, we reduced the budget drastically to take that into account. I don't think anybody projected that. Sales tax, on a positive note, $14.1 million and down just a little over 5% was a very stable number compared to the statewide numbers that we saw, and a lot of communities that had a lot of, a lot of big-box taxes. So our total revenue came in at $84.1, and again... So our total revenue came in at 84.1 and again, we were projecting to be at about 84.6. So I'm not going to go through this individual slide. You have that. Total expenses came in 2.6 million under budget. Public works, parks, forestry wrecks, you can read those. All were under budget by that amount. Police and fire department expenditures were over budget by 800 K and 290 respectively. This is not an issue where we had more staff than we budgeted. This is not an issue of police and fire going over their supplies budget. We had a lot of payouts in the departments. We also, when we took over and looked at the departments, we wanted to try and budget much more closely. Well, when we did, one of the things that we didn't include was a scheduled payout per contract. And that that's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So think of it as having a 26 and a half month, I'm sorry, 26 and a half pay periods instead of 26. So this was not an issue of police and fire being overstaffed. They were, for the first time in many years, both departments were fully staffed. So all other departmental expenditures, as I say, came in very close to the budget in police and fire. So overall, they they were right where we wanted them to be as far as level of service. So again, this is just a graphic to let you know what we just said verbally. I won't go through it. But again, very, I think the departments did an excellent job in trying to meet the goal that we had set for them. So again, looking at the summary, if you look at the summary and take a look at the note at the bottom, the Caravelli property sale, that 1.9 million dollars is currently in the general fund. So that means we're at approximately 13.3 million or only down a million dollars from where we were more than a year ago in our fund reserves. And given the economy, that's a very healthy place for us to be. And given what we've done to our budget, we hope that we can sustain that with the lower budget expenses and lower budget revenues. Other funds, just going to go through a few things. You have all of the tables regarding all the other funds and a memorandum on that. So the downtown two TIF, it came in under budget, but that was really an accounting entry. We were consolidating the debt and the capital TIFs, and we didn't need to make the entry. So the in in short, the downtown two TIF came in very much as expected on the revenue side. We just didn't make one of the accounting entries to consolidate two funds that we had when we closed. So nothing out of the ordinary happened where we didn't have 3.5 million dollars that we expected for to be able to spend. And you've seen several reports on the downtown two TIF closing. The capital improvements fund had higher rev or higher, excuse me, the revenue variance was much higher than expected because we didn't do bonds at all. We had talked about doing a smaller amount of bonds, but based on the activity in the fund and in water and sewer, we didn't issue any bonds during '09-10. And that saved considerable interest costs, but it does show us a negative variance in the capital improvements fund. The parking fund came in very well for the year. We had lower than anticipated revenues due to a slower economy, less people downtown, less people everywhere. And as far as that goes, lower both parking fees and parking fines associated with that. Water fund and sewer fund, we did have some issues there, as we've noted in previous reports just a month ago. What was interesting to note was that we did have a large payment from the Northwest Water Commission. That was a renegotiation of that contract where we received a payment during '09-10. However, the sewer fund doesn't get any benefit from that. So the the full brunt of lower water usage and therefore lower sewer usage fell on the sewer fund and we have lowered go-forward revenues in both water and sewer to reflect that. And again, we've talked with the council. Mr. Stonebeck and I presented a report a little over a month ago on that issue. The fleet fund, as you may recall, we did not purchase a majority of our vehicles last year. So that means that we also did not ding the departments for those vehicle purchases. That helped us balance the general fund, also helped out water, sewer. All of our operating areas that have vehicles benefited from the deferral.
Excuse me, Marty. Alderman Rainey has a question.
I want to go back.
That's fine.
One department. Marty, to your knowledge, have I I know we have water and sewer fee studies and we've got some on the books that we've just been looking at. But are there any studies of water and sewer, like there are of, for example, cigarette or gas tax, where you reach a tipping point with fees so that we can say, well, it wasn't a very warm summer, so people didn't water their grass. But I can tell you that several years before you came, we had a drought and every lawn in the city of Evanston was brown because people couldn't afford to water their lawn. So I'm wondering if if we are looking at anything regarding the tipping point for prices for, I mean, if we add a tax, add to the tax, are we really going to generate more revenue?
Well, there's there's two things. One is the tipping point is a little bit different for water versus, say, cigarettes. I can choose to stop smoking. I really can't choose to stop.
Have you ever smoked?
No, I have not. Thank goodness.
I I smoked.
I said a little different.
It took nine years for me to quit.
So there's a little difference there. But just in our recent presentation to the council, I think we recognized that tipping point, that we have very serious concerns over our future utilization, not just from residents choosing, but all of the options out there for them when they purchase new equipment will force them to have lower utilization. We're seeing that quite a bit. So the tipping point is coming basically because we're being successful in conserving water.
So we we can choose to use much less water.
Yes.
We can choose to do that. And I'm I'm I'd just like to see, you know, some numbers comparing, you know, a significant drop in usage with the increase in tax to see if are we going to balance it out?
Well, we will continue with that focus in mind in our future analysis. The unfortunate part of this is, is that our embedded infrastructure does not reflect that lower utilization. Whether or not there's one unit of water going through that pipe or whether or not there's 100, we still need that pipe there. And that's what's causing us a little bit of pain right now, especially on the sewer side when we have lower utilization.
But as as you know, I mean, given the the economic situation of people in our community, especially the increased number of foreclosures, et cetera, while it is a use tax, it is it is regressive because it doesn't take into consideration how much people make or, you know.
And the other part of this is, though, where we're trying to be sensitive to that, the country as a whole is going the other way with water rates, going up, 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 the new oil. So we have to take a look at that as well, that many other jurisdictions are just raising and raising as another means of conservation. And that's pretty tough in this economy to try and do that.
I don't have a problem with our water rates. It's the sewer.
Alderman Burris?
Actually, can I hold my questions till the questions slide comes up?
Sure.
I'll let him finish. Thank you.
On the other side, for our funds, the flip side, the revenues really will mirror the expenses. So we did have an unfavorable favorable variance on debt service because we didn't issue debt. So we have a much lower cost than anticipated in principal and interest payments. The downtown two TIF, we did have some higher expenses as we closed out the TIF. Some of the, I think we had the paving expense right in front of the movie theater. That was a last minute project. So that was what contributed to that variance. The capital improvements fund, we just talked about this. We'll come back to you and talk about it. 12 million under budget because of projects deferred, not started, or not completed. So we ended the year with a higher than anticipated ending balance. Still not enough to get us through this year, so we will be coming to you to talk about debt. But we managed without any new debt last year and still did a lot of projects. Special assessments fund, again, that is our alleyway or alley paving. And that came in below a budget also because we deferred a lot of projects. Also, there's not as much interest in 50-50 programs, given the current economy. Finally, the the parking fund had a, when we say a true favorable variance, we took out the depreciation expense. So that that paper entry, we took out. So the water fund, again, similarly to on the revenue side, we really cut back on the capital projects, recognizing our lower revenues. And also the the, again, our local expenses, we had to hold back because of our lower revenues. And also that payment from the Northwest Water Commission was really one time. That was a catch-up. Fleet is just a mirror of the revenue side. The insurance fund is an issue that we did address, and it was part of our tough part of budgeting this year. 1.8 million due to higher costs, claim settlements, and we anticipate that continuing. So we did address that in the 10-11 budget, boosting those expected expenses considerably. Questions?
Can I go now? Okay, as usual, it's going to be long-winded. So great job on projecting the expenditures. You guys are pretty close to being on target. Awesome. However, the revenue projections, the variance is of serious concern, most notably in the interest income, the building permit fees, the real estate transfer tax fees. So that said, could you elaborate on how the calculations for the revenues, specifically the ones I mentioned, were done? And has that methodology for calculation, is that the same as for this fiscal year? And if yes, do you believe that the revenue for this fiscal year will be on target, considering that the revenues from last fiscal year were not on target? And I'm sorry, I can go back if.
It's okay, no. In reverse order, we will be presenting the first quarter on the 21st. So we'll see how we're doing. We preliminarily, I've looked at the first couple of months. It's tough when we get all of our property tax payment in. So we're at 45% of our property tax receipts just from timing. But when I pull that out, we're running close to our 16% we need in the first two months. No, we did not use the same methodology as we did in the previous year. And darn, I knew I'd do it. And the the first one, why did we miss in '09-10? The methodology in '09-10 was looking at a potentially bad budget year. So go back to October 2008, right when the market's going bad. So we reduced revenues anywhere from 10% to 30%, not really thinking that we needed to reduce them 50%. A swing of, for instance, on the real estate transfer tax, a swing of 50% was not anticipated. We did cut it back substantially, but we did not cut it back that far. Going forward, we are not, we did not take a sunshine approach and say, should go right back up. You know, with a change in the housing price, we'll go right back up to that level of activity. No, we we balanced this coming year or the year we're in right now at those lower revenues, saying that's our new baseline. We don't think we're going back up really fast.
Can I just follow up? I'm sorry. But I'd actually like the methodology. And I understand you're you're saying that we're not going to project as high. But the actual, I mean, I know you can't.
Sure.
Come off the top of your head right now.
Well, for building permits, I can.
Sure.
In that we do take a look at the volume of permits, our fee schedules. We work with the community development department and project based on historical, commercial, residential, and not-for-profit permits. And anything we know that's in the pipeline, that they've pulled they've pulled information, but they haven't paid a fee yet, we use all those to try and project. This year's it will be an interesting one because we were waiting on a Northwestern and it didn't happen at the end of the year. So we're anticipating a fairly large NU development to to hit in this year. That will skew our data, we hope, above budget because we weren't quite sure which year it was going to be in. As far as the real estate transfer tax, that was really just so far out of the norm. We are going to use the same process, and that is, what's our estimate for closings? What's our average house that we see the the sales for the year? And where do we see ourselves going forward? For a lot of our state revenues, it's from the Illinois Municipal League. Income tax, use tax, motor fuel tax, those are all projections we take that everyone gets the same per capita fee. And we can, for this year's budget, as a part of the revenues, highlight the methodology for each one so that that's out there for folks to take a look at and see if we want to change that methodology.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if there's no other questions, just a little bit of a preview of where we're heading. We've asked the council for a special meeting, and that meeting will be held on Monday, June the 21st. Our plan is to go through the first quarter budget report at that time to talk about a budget calendar for what will be our recommendation, a 10-month budget. We're asking the council to consider to change the fiscal year, to have a transitional fiscal year in 2011. That would be from March 1 to December 31. And then in 2012, move forward with the new 12-month fiscal year starting in January. We're also going to propose that the council consider doing the budget process as if it were a 12-month budget starting January 2010, so to do the budget in the fall rather than in the winter. So we'll be talking to you about all of those issues, coming back to you with the capital improvement program discussion, a couple of other budget-related issues, all of that you can look forward to on the 21st of June.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Next, we have citizen comment. First is Matt Rogers, speaking on Agenda IMT3. And next, Kevin O'Connor on various non-agenda topics.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff, I am here tonight to talk to you about 555 Howard Street, an issue that was discussed by planning and development a little earlier this evening. And I apologize for not being able to be here for that, but I couldn't get here in time for it. So I just wanted to make a few comments here. The thing that that most concerns me about this particular issue is I really would like to have an opportunity for public comment, for citizen comment, as is typical in a special use hearing before the zoning board. Quite often, full disclosure, I am a member of the zoning board. Quite often, we have citizens come before us and discuss how they feel projects will affect them. And I believe that extending the hours of operation for this particular establishment will have an impact on the neighborhood. And I would really like to ask the council to consider the opportunity for citizens to comment in a public forum other than before a city council hearing like this. So there is allowed to be interaction where questions can be asked of the citizens and their full testimony can be entered into findings so that you have more information to work with. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half Isabella, Madam Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, council members, city staff, and my fellow citizens of Evanston. At last month's Economic Development Committee meeting, the quote grandmother park initiative proposed that the city of Evanston provide $50,000 to help acquire the property at 1125 Dewey for a tot lot. While no one could be against a tot lot per se, the city of Evanston does not have the money. Furthermore, as Alderman Tandem pointed out to the committee, they should remember the hoops the city of Evanston put the Friends of the Evanston Public Library Group through during the budget discussions. I would ask the members of this council who serve on the Economic Development Committee to consider fairness and the bankrupt state of the of the city of Evanston when considering this matter before the. matter before the EDC this coming Wednesday. Secondly, perhaps members of the EDC also can ask Mr. Jonathan Perman, the head of the Evanston Chamber of Commerce, why last Thursday's quote "business after-hours" event was held at Schaefer's Liquors and Wines, which happens to be in Skokie, Mr. Perman's hometown. Isn't the Evanston Chamber of Commerce supposed to promote Evanston's businesses, not Skokie's? Can we find out why this occurred? I hope everyone here is embarrassed. I certainly was when I heard about it, and I saw it online. Finally, two more things. Alderman Nguyen is quoted as saying, "The economic crisis has led the city to a new era of reaching out into the community with a greater emphasis on talking to business owners to find out what they need," end quote. This begs the obvious question to our veteran Alderman, which is, shouldn't this have been done all along by you, our elected officials? Finally, let us not look to Google to save us from ourselves. As Pogo once said, "We have met the enemy, and he is us." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Alderman Rainey is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 10, 2010, then the approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of May 17. Administration and Public Works Committee would request your approval of the payroll through May 9, in the amount of $2,239,879.39, and the city bills through May 25, in the amount of $2,533,040.4. We recommend approval of the contract extension for purchase of debris hauling with G&amp;L contractors in the amount of $144,500. Approval of the contract for the 2010 summer food service program with Open Kitchen, in the amount of $2.29 per lunch. We are reimbursed $3.13 per lunch from the federal government. We request your approval of the extension of a contract with Flood Brothers for condominium garbage collection for a three-month period, while the bidding is out for the permanent collection. We request your approval of the contract extension with Groot Inc. for recycling collection for an additional three months, at the rate of $4.36 per residential unit per month. We request your approval of the contract with Ozenga Ready Mix for the purchase of concrete, in the amount of $53,450, which is the same price as in 2009, and this is an Evanston firm. Resolution 25R10, which authorizes the lease for first-floor Civic Center space for the League of Women Voters for June 1, 2010, through May 31, 2011, an increase in $6 a month to $208 per month. What a deal. Next is Resolution 30R10. It is a resolution requesting approval to engage engineering feasibility study with a firm known as Parsons Brinkerhoff, in the amount of, let's see, $275,000. This is a federal congestion mitigation and air quality improvement program, and that will reimburse us $220,000. We will pay $55,000 from the CIP. Next is Resolution 36R10, which authorizes the city manager to sign an agreement, a cooperation and grant agreement with Judicial Advisory Council of Cook County for a grant earmarked for a records management system for the Police Department, in the amount of $69,505. We request your approval of Resolution 37R10, which authorizes, which would authorize the city manager to sign a cooperation and grant agreement with the Judicial Advisory Council of Cook County for a grant earmarked for 16 tasers and related equipment for the Police Department. Next item is off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. This is the Sheridan Road Signal Upgrade Project. Next, we request your approval to introduce Ordinance 24010, which amends Title 11 of administrative, or Title 2, Administrative Adjudication. We request your approval to move on the Ordinance 22010, which amends the City Code to establish a three-way stop at Lincoln Street and Asbury. Ordinance 2810 is for action tonight, which would decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses from six to five, due to the closure of the 1800 Club at 1800 Sherman. Also for action is Ordinance 30010, which would increase the number of Class C liquor licenses to permit issuance to Little Walk a Class C liquor license. And that is at, let's tell where that is, 2426 Main Street. Also for action, Ordinance 31010, which would decrease the number of Class C liquor licenses from 25 to 24, due to the closure of Va. Pensiero at 1566 Oak Avenue. Also for action tonight is Ordinance 32010, which amends 356 of the City Code, classification and license fees, Class AC liquor licenses, which would authorize the service of liquor in special event venues, at, let's see, at art cinema special events. Then we have Planning and Development Committee. The first item, approval of the Emergency Shelter Grant Recommendation, is off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. P2, we request your approval for funding information and recommendation for a Families in Transition Program applicant that was presented to us at our last meeting, which will now be funded by the Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program Funds. The next item, P3, 555 Howard, a special use permit, is off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Resolution 32R10, which designates a portion of Dempster Street. Does anybody want this off the consent agenda?
Please take that one off and the next one off.
All right. P4 and P5, which are street naming, resolutions are off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Under Human Services, H1, Ordinance, this is for introduction, 12010, amending subsection 1014181 of the City Code, standing or parked idling motor vehicles, amends that to include city vehicles in that ordinance. Under Other Committees, the Community Development Act Committee requests your approval of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report 2010, which has to do with the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Shelter Grant. For appointment, the Mayor requests your approval of the following. For the Electrical Commission, Timothy Patton. For the Human Relations Commission, Betsy Levisay. And for the Northwestern City Committee, Thomas L. Gemmell. With that, Madam Mayor, I move approval.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Nine to nothing.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. If it's all right with everybody, I would like to move the agenda around a little bit and go to item P4 and P5 next, so that the people who are here in the audience could, well, if they want to, maybe they won't want to. So, Alderman Rainey, that would be yours.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of, let's see, I know, I know, here it is, I'll put it aside, of P4, which is Resolution 32R10, which designates a portion of Dempster Street between Ridge Avenue and Asbury Avenue, with the honorary street name sign, Rabbi Peter Noble Way, in honor of Rabbi Peter Noble.
And I would like to defer to Alderman Tendem. It was my request for the renaming, but Alderman Tendem, I think, would like to say a few words about the request.
Thank you. The, this year marks 30 years for Rabbi Noble and his senior, or his rabbi position at Beth Dement. We've seen a lot of change at Beth Dement over those many years, from a much smaller community involvement to a very large community involvement. Rabbi Noble has not only been active and influential in the local community, but as a rabbi in determining the reforms, or the, in changes in the reform movement, he's been known in the central, which is the Midwest region, and even nationally in his work. He's always been an advocate for social action. 18 years ago, when I first met him and I heard him speak, I, it was a different kind of man at the helm. I had not been privileged to hear that call for action from a man in his position. He's a very dear man and very special to me in that respect, but I know he's also very special to the community. I welcome and thank you for nominating or approving this, potentially approving this naming of Dempster Street.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of naming this, the street Rabbi Peter Noble Way? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is a wonderful thing to have done. Alderman Nguyen?
I'm just waiting for people.
Oh, all right. Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Nguyen, you're too fast for me.
Resolution 33R10 designates a portion of Forest Avenue between Kedzie and Keeney Street, with the honorary name sign, Lauterbach Way, in honor of Ned and Albie Lauterbach.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am, I was very, very excited and pleased when the neighbors on Forest Avenue called me up and asked how, what this process entailed, and asked for me to participate in it, and I was, I thought, how appropriate, and to name this street Forest Avenue, where the Ned and Albie lived for so much of their lives here in Evanston, for them. It's indicative of the levels of community involvement that they both had. They were marvelous neighbors on Forest Avenue. They're now in the Mather, and they are proving to be marvelous and active neighbors there as well. Apparently, Ned has been asked to chair several committees. But I did want to talk about both of them, in terms of their being not only wonderful neighbors, but they were really, they have been community leaders here in Evanston in every way. Ned was Third Ward Alderman for two terms. During that time, he served on the Human Services Committee, and very importantly, for all of those of us up here who understand, on the Flood and Pollution Control Board, and spearheaded the Long Range Sewer Plan, and really put Evanston so far ahead of the rest of the United States in terms of our water infrastructure. I mentioned this at the committee, I know that this may seem dry to those of us in the audience, except when I was at the National League of Cities Conference, it was all about water infrastructure. And we were able to say that a lot of our projects here in Evanston were done. And that was really strategically become, because of Ned Lauterbach, and we owe him a huge debt for that. Albie Lauterbach was equally active in the community over all of these years and continues to be so. They were a pair, and if you wanted to know about Evanston, you went to, you went to them. And even now, you can go to them and get a marvelous oral history of Evanston for all of this time. They raised five children here in Evanston, and we still have a Third Ward resident here this evening. Kaki Lauterbach, one of their daughters, is here this evening. So, I really want to say that I think this is such an appropriate honor for both Ned and Albie, and once again, we have the, these typical, the epitome of what it means to be an Evanstonian, someone who is active in their community, participates and continues to participate in the life of their community up into their eighth decade. So, I also urge all of you to approve this naming of the street, and come celebrate with us when we put up the new street sign.
Thank you. I'd like to say one thing about Albie Lauterbach. Every time I see Senator Richard Durbin--
Yes.
--he has one question about Evanston, and that's, "How's Albie?" So, if I'm lobbying Senator Durbin, and I ever, which has never happened, but if I ever have a disagreement with him, I'm calling Albie. And she'll sort it out. But she has had a national impact as well.
Very much.
All right, all in favor of renaming the street?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is another wonderful renaming. All right, now, Alderman Jean--
Stay in P and D.
Do you want to stay in P and D? All right, Alderman Rainey.
P1 was removed from the consent agenda because of one exception. The committee would request you approve all of the allocations under the Emergency Shelter Grant Recommendations, with the exception of the Family Promise Organization for $6,000, which we are holding in committee. We're not rejecting it. We're holding it in committee for some additional information. But with that amendment, I move approval of P1, the Emergency Shelter Grant Recommendations.
Second. All right, City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Nine to nothing. The Emergency Shelter Grant Recommendations, as amended, are passed.
And that will go back to committee for further consideration at next meeting. Next, item P3, a request to amend operating hours, the condition of the special use permit for 555 Howard. Madam Mayor, members of the Council, after much discussion, the committee agreed upon the following recommended, the following amendment to the special use permit, and that is that the station be allowed to operate the convenience store from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week, as opposed to accepting the staff's denial of any amendment. So, the amended special use hours will be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday.
Review.
And then after, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, with the caveat that in three months, it be returned to the committee, to Planning and Development, for a review of the circumstances surrounding the staying open for the extra hour and day.
Second.
All right. I don't believe we need a roll call vote for this.
It suggests we do.
I was thinking that it might be safer. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
That completes my report.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Call Council's attention to item 88. This is a request for approval of Resolution 34R10, authorizing the city manager to sign the I dot Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation for Phase II Design Engineering Services with Stanley Consulting Incorporated, to modernize traffic signals along Sheridan Road-- along Sheridan Road from Chicago Avenue to Central Street. There was a second request, and that was to seek authorization for the city manager to negotiate an agreement with Northwestern University for the design, construction, and funding of the traffic signal at the NU entrance south of Garrett Place and Sheridan Road. At the request of the first ward alderman, the committee recommend that we separate the two and continue to pursue part one, which is a long-term project. And while the first ward alderman set up a meeting in her ward to engage in further discussion, public discussion about this particular light. So at this particular point in time, I will separate the second part and will hold that in committee. We'll hold, we held that in committee, right?
Right, yes.
We held that in committee. And so I will move then approval of Resolution thirty-four R dash ten, authorizing the city manager to sign the I dot local agency agreement for federal participation for phase-two design engineering services with Stanley Consultant Inc. to modernize traffic signal along Sheridan Road from Chicago Avenue to Central Street.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's, I have a voice vote on this one, is that safe?
It's money.
Money? All right, where's, just authorizes him to sign it. Well, let's do a roll call vote.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Holmes, do you have any report?
Your report.
All right, call of the wards, beginning with Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna sit, if you don't mind. I would just like to first congratulate the YMCA this weekend, on the, this past weekend, on such a wonderful celebration in Evanston, in the recognition of the Emerson Street Y. It was a fantastic evening. For all of those who were there, I'm sure had a fantastic time, and for those of you who had missed it, hopefully you'll get a chance to look at the video, which I think will give you a really good feeling about Evanston and what the Emerson Street Y meant, not only to the African-American community, but to the community at large. And then I would just like to say my own special thank you, I don't see him anymore, but to Chief Brakowski, in terms of, really, thank you, there you are, Alan, thank you. I just really enjoyed working with you, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to thank Alderman, I mean, Alan Brzinski, Chief Brzinski, for having been able to serve with him for at least a year, getting to know him, and I wish you best of luck, and your family as well. I'd also like to say congratulations to the McGaw YMCA and their, and their event on Saturday. It was truly a special evening, the feeling and the mood, and the mood in the room and the feeling about was really just amazing, and we all enjoyed it. And finally, I'd like to congratulate the Hillside Free Methodist Church on their ice cream social, celebrating the first anniversary of their food pantry. They do an incredible job out there. The Dr. Mark Taylor and Reverend Maya Lupto, I believe, have taken on this, this project, and it is actually, has expanded, and they're going to set out to make that physically expand. They do serve quite a number of families in the area and receive amazing donations from area food suppliers, but they have, you know, it's just an amazing process and very well articulated and very well organized. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last month, I attended Richie Daley's Global Cities Forum in Chicago, along with local government representatives from apparently more than a hundred countries. I found about, out about it reading The Reader, found an ad in The Reader, and went, and it was a good time, good way to spend half a day downtown. There were interesting panelists, including the mayors of Paris and Mexico City, and attendees from cities large and small, and what I picked up from this half-day is that, and I brought my intern with me, we went down for the half-day, he got in free as a student, is that we learned that cities all over the world are facing the same challenges that we are, overcoming the local impact of the global recession, using cross-sector partnerships to generate economic growth and to build things, think Robert Crown, and enhancing our human capital through education, nurturing local talent, our youth. Secondly, the Evanston Public Library Friends is holding an armchair auction. It's this auction where you just don't even need to leave your home, you can do it from the comfort of your armchair, online. W W W E P L friends auction dot org, check it out, you can buy things, benefit E P L Friends, and among the items that you can purchase is apparently a sale with former alderman Ed Moran and knitting lessons with me, if you're interested. I don't expect that to be a very hot item. Be sure to purchase the video from the Emerson Y celebration, because it features quite prominently Alderman Dolores Holmes, and it really does tell the wonderful story of the Emerson Street Branch Y. And lastly, congratulations to Alan Brakowski on his retirement, and hearty and grateful thanks to you for your long service to Evanston, and a welcome to Deputy Chief Greg Kleiber, who will be our acting chief in the interim. So I'm sorry to say goodbye, but welcome, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. Good luck to Alan. Sounds like an exciting next life for him. I just want to comment, really to the viewing audience and to my constituents, and to thank the council for the work on five-five Howard. You just never know when you come into a legislative body, how it's going to turn out, because when I walked into this room tonight, nothing, nothing would have, in my mind, would have made me support any change in the special use, the limitations in the special use. But it became clear that compromise was needed, and I supported the, the change to seven days a week from seven to seven, which is a great deal different from the limitations in the special use. And I have in my hand a handful of letters, probably twenty-five notes from constituents, and one person came here tonight, who happens to be on the Zoning Board of Appeals, all of who supported a much more rigid position for me, but they weren't here, so they don't know the reasonableness of the council and the thoughtfulness, despite the applicant we had to deal with. So I'm impressed with your help, and I appreciate it. And I want to say something about the yellow line. Alderman Grover asked me today, why, why is this the first time anybody ever suggested a stop on the yellow line? It goes from Howard Street to Skokie without ever stopping in Evanston, and of course, the yellow line is the Skokie Swift, and any stop makes it less swift. So that's why there has never been support from the larger community in Evanston, their support, but not from outside, because people want to get from here to there, and I would suppose it has something to do with the Evanston Express, it go, used to at least go from downtown, so that Skokie got their swift. But anyway, this is a very important study, this is a next step, and I think in, in our service to this city, that we might possibly see the begin, beginning of construction on a stop in Evanston. We don't know where that will be, most probably Dodge, but we don't know that yet, so this study will help make that decision. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Thank you. I want to add my congratulations to the chief. Thank you for your years of service and your positive disposition, and your smile and that laugh will be definitely missed. I also want to echo what Alderman Holmes, Tendem, and Grover said about the Evanston Y M C A event. It was a fabulous evening, and I, the video was amazing. I highly recommend that if you weren't there, that you please see it. And also, thank you for residents for bearing with us on the crosswalks. We are moving along, there will be new signs coming soon, and I know it's been an issue that we've been grappling with for far too long, but I'm guaranteed that something will happen in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, best wishes to you. You look so young and healthy, I'm sure you're gonna have a wonderful time with what you decide to do from here on out. So just thank you so much for everything you've done for us. I want to thank the council for its vote tonight on the Garrett traffic light, and announce that we are having our first ward meeting, at which that will be addressed. The entire community is invited. The meeting is Tuesday, June first, from seven to nine p.m. in the large community room in the downtown library, and we'll be discussing other first ward issues as well, so I hope you'll bear with us on that, but hope to have a good turnout that night. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say congratulations, chief, you know, may you find time, make time to do everything else that you wanted to do, that you couldn't do as chief, and you won't have to sleep lightly, you could sleep deeply now, because one will be calling you. I want to also congratulate Lehman on the economic summit last Thursday, was it? That was Friday? That was very well done, and, you know, we appreciate your leadership in coming forth, and I don't think you sleep either, so you seem to be very productive. But that very day, we all woke up to the news of the death, shooting death of a young man in the, the community. We are having a meeting with the police department to get some update tomorrow night at seven fifteen at Robert Crown Community Center, and Alderman Wilson and the mayor will probably be there. We had walked the neighborhood in order to just touch bases with the neighbors, and they were very heartened by the fact that we were there. So we hope to see those of you from the neighborhood there tomorrow night. Another matter I wanted to just bring up, and that is, the chief, where's our chief of police? He didn't, he's there? Chief, you remember, we, at the end of every school year, we distribute these brochures to the, to the young folks, and I don't know whether you have that going on, but please, if you can get it out to them, and this is the third year we're doing that, and the purpose of that is to communicate some do's and don'ts to our young people. I think that it's important that we continue to communicate with them. And if you remember last year, we had said, try to jazz up the graphic, so some of our young people can at least open them and read them. So, all right, thank you very much. Lastly, I got sick Saturday evening and could not make it to the Evanston Y's event, and I'm looking forward to purchasing the videotape so I could get in the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, I, I want to also add my farewell and best wishes to Chief Brakowski. I've learned an awful lot in my years on the council from, from you about the fire department, about fighting fires and, and staying safe, and fortunately, I only ever had to walk through one fire scene with you, it was a pretty awful one, but I, I really admire your professionalism and wish you the best of luck. So farewell and welcome to the acting chief position, so he relieves you now, so.
Not yet.
Not yet, that's right, on Friday that happens. I was in New Jersey helping my parents celebrate their sixtieth wedding anniversary, so I couldn't go to the Y, but how do you buy the video that we've all been mentioning over and over again?
All the Y and pay twenty-five dollars.
All the Y? All right, through the Y? Okay, so we should all go to the Y website?
McGaw Y M C A dot org.
Okay, McGaw Y M C A dot org, so that's for everyone else, and me as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Also like to thank the chief for his service, and I think most of the exciting things have already been covered, but that said, I'll move that we convene into executive session unless there's other business.
Thank you.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, one-twenty slash two A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, real estate, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five I L C S one-twenty slash two, subsection C one, C five, C six, C eleven, and C twenty-one.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes.
I just put in the marks, what are we gonna do with this? Back over with? But we didn't have much relevant time.